Welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Carrie Hulak. I'm the editor of Richmond Side. This is the first of a series of three Richmond City Council candidates forums. And if you're new to us, Richmond Side is a Richmond-focused news website based right here at CoBiz. We launched three months ago.
Bienvenidos. Hola a todos. Soy Carrie Hula, directora de Richmond Side. Muchas gracias por unirse al primero de una serie de tres foros de candidatos al Ayuntamiento de Richmond. Richmond Side es un sitio web de noticias centrado en Richmond, con sede aquí mismo en CoBiz, cuyo lanzamiento fue hace tres meses atrás.
And our first order of business is to welcome tonight's interpreters. Please give a warm welcome to Ladna Miller and Kayla Lugo-Ranial. They're going to explain how the interpretation works.
Nuestra primer orden del día es presentar a nuestras intérpretes. Por favor, den una cálida bienvenida a Kayla Lugo-Ranial y Ladna Miller, que explicarán un poco cómo funciona la interpretación. Hola, yo soy Kayla y estoy aquí con Ladna y hoy haremos sus intérpretes entre inglés y español. Hello, I am Kayla and I am here with Ladna and today, tonight, we will be your interpreters between English and Spanish. Richmond Side, UC Berkeley's Richmond Confidential, El Tímpano y Contra Costa Pulse están comprometidos con crear espacios, con la justicia del lenguaje y con crear espacios multilingües, porque sabemos que nuestros eventos son más democráticos y poderosos cuando son multilingües. Richmond Side, UC Berkeley's Richmond Confidential, El Tímpano y Contra Costa Pulse are committed to language justice and to creating multilingual spaces because they know our movements are more democratic and more powerful when they are multilingual. Wait, powerful, when they are multilingual, thank you. Hoy tendremos interpretación hacia el español de manera simultánea y hacia el inglés de manera consecutiva. Si desea oír el evento en español, por favor, pase por la entrada a buscar un dispositivo de interpretación. Tonight, we will have simultaneous interpretation into Spanish and consecutive interpretation into English. If you'd prefer to listen to the event in Spanish, please go and pick up a device near the entrance. And... El crear espacios, well, I'm gonna now go into simultaneous and in English and she, Ladna, will be doing into Spanish simultaneous. Here we go. Creating multilingual spaces is not only the responsibility of the interpreters, but of everyone here. That's why we'll be sharing some guidelines so you can help us out. Spanish is 30% longer than English. As such, it takes longer to say things in Spanish. We interpreters are constantly competing with our own voices while we interpret, even if we're whispering. It is harder to hear than you think. As such, everyone can help us by speaking at a moderate pace, loudly and clearly. If we need you to speak more slowly, we'll make this signal. If you see us do it, please do it with us so that the speaker can see us. This is a collective effort, everyone. I'm waiting. Okay, good, thank you. If we need you to speak louder or closer to the microphone, we will do this. And what will you do? Thank you, like in a concert, everyone with us if you see it, do it. And we can only interpret one voice at a time. We've tried interpreting more, but one voice at a time. So if more than one person is speaking at a time, we'll just remind you by doing this. You can remember this if you wish, but just do this with us, please. Let's practice? Okay, thank you so much. Speak one person at a time. Please wait two to three seconds when you change speakers so that we can catch up with what people have said. And lastly, please don't suffer in silence. If you're having trouble with the interpretation, let the interpreter who's not interpreting at that time know and we'll be glad to help. Thank you and enjoy your event.
Thank you, Ladna and Kayla. We appreciate you being here. Now I'd like to introduce the other newsrooms co-hosting our three Meet the Candidate forums. In addition to Richmond Side, our forums are co-hosted by UC Berkeley's Richmond Confidential, El Tímpano and the Contra Costa Pulse. We thank them and Events Director Becky Couch-Alvarado, our timekeeper for tonight, for their work organizing these forums. Here's how tonight will work. Each candidate will get two minutes to introduce themselves. Our moderator, Christine Tiabo, will then present some questions that were submitted by Richmond residents and compiled by journalists from the participating sponsors. Each candidate will have the opportunity to respond. Responses are limited to three minutes. We'll then open it up to questions from the audience. You see the cards around your chairs. You can jot a question down there and pass it in or you can take the mic to ask a question if you'd like. If you're on Zoom, you can put your question in the chat and our volunteers will write it down and Christine will ask it. Finally, we'll close out the evening by giving the candidates a minute each to give any closing remarks that they wish to. I'd like to remind everyone to silence your phones. Are there any questions about the process? All right, fantastic. So I'd like to, most importantly, introduce and welcome our candidates. Please welcome Dr. Jamila Brown, Mark Wasberg, and District One Councilmember Melvin Willis. Thank you so much for being here. And I'm gonna turn it over to our moderator, Christine.
Thanks, Carrie. Hi, everyone, and welcome. I'm the editor of Richmond Confidential. And before we begin, we're asking everyone, the candidates, as well as the audience, to please respect each other's time and not interrupt each other. And we also ask that you follow the rules of civil discourse, keeping your tone non-confrontational and your language respectful. And we're gonna start by giving each candidate two minutes to introduce themselves. We're going in alphabetical order, which brings us first to Dr. Brown.
Hello, everyone, and thank you so much. Greetings, District One, and if you're not District One, welcome to District One and to everyone who put this magnificent event together this evening. My name is Dr. Jamila Brown, a proud fourth-generation Richmond resident, born and raised right here in District One. This community isn't just where I grew up. It's where I learned the value of hard work, resilience, and the power of neighbors supporting each other. I've walked these streets, I've attended these schools, and faced some of the same challenges you have. While I've earned my doctorate in social work and built a career helping those throughout California, my heart has always remained in District One. I've seen too often how we've been overlooked and underserved, and I am running for city council to change that. I am not just here to represent. I'm here to fight, fight for the resources, the opportunities, and the attention that this district deserves. My vision is very simple but powerful. Safer streets, greater engagement, more affordable housing, and a thriving local economy. I'm not a politician. I'm a mom, a friend, and a neighbor who's ready to ensure our community finally gets the investment it needs. Together, we can build a better District One, one where we're heard and no one is left behind. Let's make sure our district gets the respect and the resources it deserves. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and now Mr. Wasberg.
Well, I'm Mark Wasberg. I grew up in San Pablo, went to Richmond High, spent all my working years in Richmond. First, I was a factory worker. I became an auto technician. Then I went to work at Chevron as a mechanic. Then I got involved with Andre Schumake and all the other reverends here when the heyday of the violence, between 2004 and 2010, it was all out to protest the Kansas City Operation Richmond, the Black Crime Summit. I was all through these people for six years. And I lived in this whole area all my life. I used to cruise the main down here, down to McDonald Avenue. Now, I don't think any people was here during that time. And I lived in Point Richmond, and there's a lot of people asking me, "What are you hanging around here for, Mark?" I said, "Man, I'm on a roll." I said, "There's shootings and beatings and homicides everywhere. I'm not going anywhere." I mean, it was really bad during this time. Then I got involved in, I made a documentary. I got involved in filmmaking, going to school, being a film editor. I host my own television show. I got the flyer right on the table over there. I mean, I like the politics. I like the air. The weather's great. And I don't live far from here, you know? I mean, the reason why I hung around here because of the job opportunities. And I mean, there was factory jobs everywhere. I mean, I had a lot of friends here. And Richmond's gonna be my home for a long time, and I'm mostly concerned about the high crime rate here. This is why I've been fighting the city council. This is why I made a documentary to show you people what's really going on. I mean, actually, just right down the street here on Fourth and McDonald, probably about 95% of the homicides were there. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wasberg, and now Councilmember Willis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining today and everybody who hosted this event this evening. My name's Melvin Willis. I was born and raised in Richmond, grew up in a single-parent household because my dad ended up passing away before I was born. Primarily grew up around the 23rd Street corridor. For those of you that were around late 90s, early 2000s, Bab's Dairy was a place my mom used to work at, and that's where I spent most of my time, including just walking up and down to get from point A to point B, like to the BART station. My political engagement first started in 2011 when I joined a group called ACE, the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. And that forced me to do door-to-door outreach to talk with folks about issues and concerns and solutions they wanted to work on in order to tackle those issues. That first thing led to us advocating and fighting for vacant property registration ordinance in 2012 that got passed through the Richmond City Council. When I first ran for city council, I honestly had no, didn't think I was gonna win. I was mainly fighting for rent control and just cause for eviction, which was the first rent control law to be passed in Richmond in over 30 years. And since then, I went on to joining the council, helped increase the minimum wage to $15 an hour with the cost of living adjustment. Supported Measures E and K, which was to take 3% of the general fund and put it towards youth programs and services. When Donald Trump was elected, we strengthened our sanctuary city ordinance by divesting from license plate readers that shared information with immigration, custom, and enforcement. And I was a part of many county efforts to end the contracts with ICE, actually, at the West County Jail. And this year, we actually fought for, with one Contra Costa for health care for undocumented adults in Contra Costa County who couldn't qualify for anything else. And I'll talk about more when I have more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Willis. In our first round, I'm gonna be asking you questions that were compiled by journalists from the four media outlets that we mentioned at the beginning. And we just asked that you speak a little more slower, a little slower than you normally do for the interpreters, and that you keep your responses to no more than three minutes. I think we'll start with Mr. Willis and we'll go backward down the line. And the first question is very simply, why should voters choose you?
The next, okay, this is still on. Ultimately, I want voters to vote their conscience. If anything I say resonates with you, your values and integrity, please vote for me. Otherwise, the argument that I can make for myself objectively without being biased towards myself is I've been an organizer in Richmond, Contra Costa County, for the past 30 years, which has also led me to do organizing work at the state level. ACE, no, 30 years, 13 years, one, three. ACE does an annual lobby day, and I've always participated in those to also advocate for statewide policies. And a lot of the times, they make me a lobby lead to help train new members or new staff members on agendas on what we're going to do as we're talking to legislators. A lot of the work that I've worked on statewide has been around housing. Even this year, we were fighting for a constitutional amendment to make housing a human right in California's state constitution. And we also were lobbying our legislators and housing committees to fix our statewide just cause for eviction, which allowed a loophole for folks to be evicted just for saying like, "Hey, I want to renovate this place. You have to go. You can come back, but the rent is gonna be higher." So we were advocating this year to fix that. I've also just been working countywide as well with many labor groups and community-based organizations where we fought for the Contra Costa A3 program, also known as the Miles Hall Crisis Response Hub, named after the individual who was gunned down and killed by Walnut Creek Police when he was having a mental health crisis. And we also went ahead as part of the Racial Justice Coalition to advocate for funding to go to African-American wellness and holistic services. Currently, there's $8.5 million put to the side for groups who are already serving the African-American community. And there is an $80,000 feasibility study that is happening to see what a county-wide hub would look like. And a lot of this is just me building relationships with many community-based organizations, our labor leaders, and community stakeholders who are all coming together to fight for improvements in the county wherever the issue is. All the issues that I mentioned, none of them have ever been beneficial for myself, but it is about honoring the integrity and needs of community members who are fighting for these services and resources and making sure I'm not only organizing with them so their voices are heard, but as I'm carrying their message, honoring the integrity of what they're saying without going into tokenism or poverty pumping.
Why should you vote for me? Have anybody watched the city council? Huh? I've been fighting the city council, right? Last time I was there, I said, "The captain went up to me and grabbed me. He says, 'You have no constitutional right to speak' because the mayor does not believe in any constitutional rights. This is why you vote for me. You're standing next to the Palestinian flag sponsoring terrorism and hate and violence. You do not take a note to the Constitution and support a bunch of terrorists. They defunded the police. They got involved and told the police not to enforce the law. They had a bunch of criminals running around here going crazy. This is why Richmond was the most violent city in the state ever since McLaughlin got on city council and their RPA admitted that they're Bernie Sanders government. You can't take note to the Constitution when you're supporting this. Their job is to obey the constitutional laws, to make you safe, to support law enforcement. And what does the RPA does? They totally destroy the whole entire thing. Every time I want them to speak, "Oh, you don't have the right to speak." Well, what about the First Amendment? What about the Brown Act? You see, this is the kind of government we have. Ever since the RPA took office, Richmond has been a disaster. They try to destroy the real estate market with TOPA, excuse me, and they want to try to imp their own type of laws. And this thing from Chevron now, from my own personal opinion, it's a hoax because there's no physical contract between both parties and saying that they're gonna get this money from Chevron. Nothing. All they're saying, because they did it for political reasons so they could get the vote. That's what they've been doing. And these people are so corrupt. This is why I've been fighting the city council for a number of years now. And right now, you have three people running on the same ticket. This is what you call an anarchist. This is what you call a dictatorship because they're trying to everything they can to keep the status quo on that city council. If you are not a RPA member, and if you get on the city council, you're toast because you are not gonna get the votes that you need, and you're not gonna get nothing done. They're gonna do what they want to do, period. Now, you need, from now on, watch the city council meetings and you'll see what's really going on because right now, I'm really gonna go up there. I'm not gonna give them the business. I'm just gonna speak the truth because I respect my constitutional laws. I respect my country. And I'm not gonna have a bunch of lawmakers on the city council that sponsor terrorism, that stand up for hate. They even condemn Israel for defending themselves. How would you like the big bully Kim attack you?
The question was, why should you vote for me? I spent this campaign season, this campaign season, not telling folks to vote for me, but getting them registered because in District One, we have such a low propensity voting threshold where we have 20,000 residents, and not all are documented. However, we had 4,700, roughly, the last District One election to cast ballots, and only about 2,500 actually participated. So when we say, "Vote for me, vote for me," I really don't find any enthusiasm behind that. It's more so educating the public on this local political process, why there is such a huge importance that needs to surround local government, and how the presidential election is monumental, especially this year. However, we need to know who is having the say in our daily lives, who is having a say when we need a speed bump in front of our house. Who do we go to and things of that nature? I myself was an organizer once upon a time on the front line of seemed like every issue. However, I knew that that would limit me, so I had to move towards wanting to become a proactive leader and becoming a proactive leader and that someone that can actually, you know, put the advocacy into action. And it's one thing to fight for something or to go against the status quo, but we must be proactive leaders. We must go against the status quo. We must break up the monotony that is going on in our current council. And I feel like I'm the woman for the job, so thank you.
Thank you all. For the second question, we'll start with Mr. Wasberg, then go to Dr. Brown, then Councilmember Willis. Our reporters from the news organizations, they've been in District One, they've been talking to people. And what they're hearing time and again is that people are very dissatisfied with the physical condition of the district, of the streets, that there is illegal dumping going on, there's trash, there's homelessness, and other quality-of-life issues seem to be at the forefront. So how would you address these things?
Well, first of all, you need to get the RPA out of the city council. That's one thing. That's a major problem. Now, this right here, I took a picture of this homeless man here who's blocking the sidewalk. Every time I walk by there, you can smell urine and human waste. He's been there for three months and the Richmond PD has did nothing because the RPA, the city council, told the police not to do anything. You're just gonna have to convince the people not to do it. It's the people that's making the city dirty, right? I mean, you gotta have to like train these people, you know? Put your trash in the garbage or once you call the city up and have them come and pick it up. See, they don't have a program like that. People just go ahead and dump it out on the street because actually, in this district right here, you got a bunch of poor people. They can't afford to go to the dump, take a mattress to a dump or load up their pickup truck and go to the city dump. So what they do, they just throw it down on the street because where I live at, I see people dumping all the time. And I'm just sitting there watching. This guy pulled up with a whole truck, just threw everything, just threw mattresses out, chairs and tables. So I called it in. Next day, they came up and bring it up. But you have to convince the people not to trash the city. I mean, face it, the last 20 years, Central Richmond has been the most violent place here. I mean, there's a lot of poor people. I mean, it's not considered a well-to-do area, but there's some people that have good, steady jobs, but mostly people are low income. And we know for a fact that Central was the most violent place in the whole entire city. But it's all convinced the people, "Don't trash. Just make a phone call." See, this is what the city's not doing. They're not having a program where they could call up the city and say, "Hey, come and pick up my mattress." See, they're not doing that because people don't want to waste their time loading stuff in the truck and take it to the dump. So, you know, there's other ways that you could do it, convince the people not to do this stuff.
When we talk about District One, or when we talk about Richmond, and you mentioned District One, most people are not gonna know what you're talking about right offhand. But when you mention downtown Richmond or central Richmond or Belleting Woods, that's typically the area that's known as the ghetto. So the interpretation that folks have is that this is an any-and-everything-go-type neighborhood. And I feel that in order to get control of the trash and all of the concerns that were mentioned, is that create stricter property maintenance codes. Also, fining those landlords and landowners who allow their properties to just go undelved with on a daily basis. Hold our city officials accountable for the many unused properties that are available and spaces to be activated for local organizations and things of that nature. Also prioritizing affordable housing so we could get some of the folks that are on the streets, off of the streets. 2023, they did, the numbers were that there were about 630-some-odd unhoused folks. Yet, we have about 430 surplus properties, which about 17 of them qualify for affordable housing. So what does that tell us? That tells us that we need to get to building and that we need to get folks that are ready to push and ready to fight and cut out all of the, who you don't take money from and all of the other type of rhetoric that continues and do what's in the best interest of Richmond residents because that's my vested interest. Once elected into office, it's gonna be Richmond first, Richmond residents first. So whatever that looks like, what's in the needs of the community. However, we know, and I know personally working in social work, that we're not gonna make everyone happy, but we can do what's right. And when you're doing what's right, everything else seems to just fall in place. So that's my contribution. Thank you.
Yeah, especially beginning in 2020. That's when I noticed houselessness get worse, poverty got even worse to the point where folks are having yard sales every other week in places I've never even seen them. And also, there was just, there was a lot of recommendations that came from our city staff to actually cut services and lay off people. So what I felt like I'd been doing when I got reelected in 2020 is just making sure that the services that we already had stay there to begin with because all those programs that take care of our roads and service our community, those folks were looking at layoffs and furloughs. So some of the steps that I did take while in office is I did pass a, led the effort to pass an eviction moratorium to prevent people from being evicted because it is easier to become homeless than it is to actually get back into housing. We also managed to get some money from the state where we brought services to the encampments that did pop up and start transitioning people out of those encampments. For the illegal dumping, we just last year started a block camera program and started putting up license plate readers and cameras in hotspot areas where dumping was happening. So if we're able to catch those folks who are doing the illegal dumping, we can actually go after them and hold them accountable to discourage them from doing illegal dumping. we can actually go after them and hold them accountable to discourage them from doing illegal dumping again. Uh, we're in a better place where our budget is healthier than it was, so we can start tackling our crumbling infrastructure needs, because we've only been able to provide services most of the time and deal with some of our higher traffic areas of infrastructure, but never do a full makeup like we've always been wanting. And this has been an issue that's been going on even before I was on the council. One thing that we have done is we do have a community love your block, block program, where we can reach out to residents and community-based organizations to actually get community members out and be part of a community cleanup day, which I participated in many of those myself, and always fun. You just get to meet people, and even folks who aren't necessarily involved are happy that community members just showed up to care, because they do feel abandoned, or they can't... Whatever's going on in our lives, they just haven't seen that type of investment in community. And when we're all coming together to actually love our block, it does make the biggest difference. And, um, yeah, the other thing that's not going to need to happen, which I'm encouraging every Richmond resident to do, and especially District One, is now that we have this $550 million over the next 10 years, we have community budget hearings, and we need to make sure that community members, especially out here where the needs are, are showing up and saying what we need at the council.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll go Brown, Willis, Rossberg. Um, it's no surprise to any of you that the average income in District One is around $72,000 a year, and that about 35% of the people who live in your district are earning less than $50,000 a year. Some of the residents that we spoke to are so focused on just getting by that they don't get involved in the political process at all. Um, how, what would you do to reach out to these constituents and to, um, hear their concerns?
Thank you. Yeah, there are so many ways that we can move into a more modernized, um, way of reaching our constituents. We know that our, um, our younger folks are on social media, so making sure that we have someone that's matching their energy on social media and being able to, um, to cross over that information. When you go to city council meetings and things like that, you probably come across like maybe a 96 pager. And it's like, hmm, the odds of them actually reading it through, probably less than likely. However, if we had someone breaking down those really dense documents down to the public to where they can understand, um, I think they'll feel like that's transparent. Also, being able to make city council meetings accessible for everyone. We have working parents and, um, folks that are just getting off work. So the likelihood of staying at a council meeting till 1:30 a.m. is not really, you know, the best thing, if we want to engage folks in this political, uh, process. Um, also, just encouraging folks to attend their neighborhood council meetings. So that's a step down, and it's, it's, um, it's about, um, once a month, so, which is really doable. And they only have you in there for about an hour, hour and a half, and they have food and snacks and, and, and everything like that. So that's pretty encouraging for folks to get out. But communicating with your neighborhood council meetings, um, you're able to see other, um, community members, other neighbors, where you can collectively voice your opinions, and, you know, they'll take that and escalate, uh, your concerns up. And just also, just being transparent, being a council member who's visible in their community, and not just during election time. Because so often during election time, we have council members and candidates that are flooding our communities with these elevated promises. And then afterwards, we don't see them anymore. So again, being visible in your community, attending events, and just, it, community engagement looks like a lot of things. So just, you know, just starting somewhere and getting engaged with your community. And that's why, that's what I love so much about this district election, is that you're able to hone in on your, on your, um, neighborhood and interact more frequently with your constituents. So I think just starting there in your district, being very, very solid in your district, and then eventually expanding out, because although we do, um, although we will run, um, or oversee the District One, we are city council members of the entire city of Richmond. But again, starting small and branching out.
Yes, um, there was a request to repeat the question. We spoke to residents in the district who were so focused on getting by that they don't get involved at all with the political process. So how would you reach out to those people to bring them in and to, um, hear their concerns? So it's Mr. Willis, and, and then you, Mr. Rossberg.
Oh, yeah, no, um, if it wasn't for ACE, I don't know if I would have been participating in my own city government, because, yeah, no. I understand that getting by, living check to check, hoping to make it, make it to the next paycheck, so you can do grocery shopping and take care of all the other necessities. So I am grateful that I do have a job that allows me to be organized and pays me to be in the community, so I can actually have been able to build up the skills to really do those, that community engagement. Usually what I do, especially when I do hear about an issue, if people can't make it to a council meeting, I'll come straight to them and do a site visit and just say, "Okay, what is the issue? How long has it been happening? Where is it happening at? What is the solution that you need?" And sometimes the solution is simple. It's, I will get people connected to our staff and department heads at the city and schedule one-on-ones, or if it's necessary, schedule group meetings with other neighbors to, you know, really paint a picture of what those issues are. A couple of examples of that was at the beginning of this year, at one of our very, very low-income, uh, residents at the St. John's Apartments. Uh, yeah, I, that was a angry week for me, because a bunch of people got 10-day pay-or-quit notices, anywhere between $3,000 to $14,000, "Please pay that to me in 10 days or get out." Freaking out a bunch of people, and within a half an hour, I was with the rent program director and a bunch of residents standing outside of the St. John's, getting them connected to those services, scheduling counseling appointments, and then also engaging with the property managers to let them know what they did wrong and a proper way to go about that. Also, around the corner from where I live, there were some lights that were actually hooked up to light up the Wendell Park area, but nobody ever turned on the switch. And it took residents actually coming out and raising the issue. And we figured out that, yeah, they had a work order for it, but the person who worked for PG&E didn't work there anymore, so it just got lost in the shuffle. Same thing with some of the speed bumps that needed to go up. We had transitions in our Public Works Department, so a lot of those issues got launched in the shuffle. So doing that re-engagement and status check, and making sure that residents have that constant communication, know exactly who to talk to. And I also, uh, will tell them, like, "If you can't do it yourself, add me to the email, then I'll try to bolster, move that thing forward." And also, speaking out of public comment, um, we still have Zoom, so people can call in from home, take their two minutes at public comment, and I will organize community members to tie up our Zoom line if need be.
I think the question was more, uh, financial needs. Well, it's your own fault for not going to college, you getting an education, right? You think you're just going to get out of high school and just start working? You know, they call it a, a job skill, a trade? Once you have that, you can make good money. I worked a Chevron. I made $1,400 a week, working as a mechanic. I worked in the auto trade, automotive trade. I was making good money. But see, people go to the city council, they cry, "Well, I ain't got no money. I ain't got no this." Well, it's their own fault. You, you need to better your life. There's opportunities out there, but the only problem is, now, now Richmond is taxing the Hades out of Chevron. They're taxing the Hades out of all these big businesses. They're not moving in. They're moving out. No business is going to come here to Richmond. Why do you think people are going to end up poor? Then they go to the city council. They think the city council has the magic wand that they're going to help them with their, uh, financial needs. How many people in this room have a skill in the trade? Huh? How many people went to two, four-year college? You make, some of you make pretty good money, right? But you can't count on the government, the city council, to take care of you. The job of the city council, make sure the streets are safe, this, uh, the streets are in good condition. You've got lighting under, they have laws to protect you people. You got to make sure the sidewalks are safe. You don't have squatters living on homeless campuses almost every street corner, like the, uh, RPA's doing the city council. They did more for these squatters on Ryder Road than they did for anybody else. They had a catering service. They gave them breakfast in bed at Tiffany's. See, this is what they're doing. See, you don't, people, see, you people don't realize what, what the Richmond City Council is doing. But it's up to you to better your lives. Don't realize that somebody else is going to hand you a plate. You need to go out and earn it yourself. In some cases, yeah, you know, you might need some help, because I know, I was homeless for 16 years. I lived in my truck for 16 years. I know what it is to dig in garbage cans to make, work for $5 an hour and, uh, make, uh, work for $15, $20 an hour. It's all up to the person on what they want to do with their life. And, yeah, I mean, I go up to city council, they say, "Oh, man, please help us with this. Please help us with that." They always got to blame, blame the landlords. You know, people live in these, uh, down on St. John's, the projects and stuff like that. They could get a better life. They could go to school, get a trade, and then they could move out. But they don't want to do it. Some of them would rather live in the ghetto and be poor. This one person told me, "It's, it's easy to be poor than have to go out and hustle through life." So I'm just going to kick back and collect my welfare and have the government take care of me. I don't buy that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. This will be the last question before we go to the audience. And the order will be Willis, Rossberg, Brown. Um, you've all mentioned lack of affordable housing. This is not just, uh, District One, or even just a Richmond problem. Uh, one senior that we talked to was saying that to afford her apartment, she needed three roommates. So what would you offer as solutions?
Yeah, and specific reasons why that is why I ended up organizing to pass rent control and just cause for eviction, which can only go so far, because those only cover units that are multifamily units built before 1995. Uh, in terms of like more housing development, the thing that I would prioritize and always prioritize since I've been on the council is just mixed income developments that have deep, deep affordable housing components in it, and making sure that, you know, I know there's requirements in terms of how you have to advertise outlets, but making sure that Richmond community members are first, because we have overcrowding in households in general, because the housing market is so extraordinarily expensive. And also, frankly, what needs to happen is, I know there's a, how many folks seen those "Vote No on 33" commercials? "Please vote yes on 33." That repeals Costa Hawkins. And if we repeal Costa Hawkins, cities like Richmond's rent control will expand to single-family's homes. Will expand to buildings that were built after 1995. We could actually look at policies like vacancy control, but right now, we're only able to maintain like the affordable housing components for people who are actually living in their units. After that, I have talked to landlords to look at their building as an investment. Now, I'm not going to judge. That is a personal choice, but that's part of the reason why this year I've been advocating for there to be a statewide constitution to make housing a constitutional right in California. And also statewide, there's many groups that are organizing towards the Million Homes Campaign to hold Gavin Newsom accountable for his, uh, or any governor, frankly, for their plan to build a million homes by 2030. We need, and the things that I've also have done is I've supported efforts for like community land trusts locally with some of our ARPA money, and also countywide with the Measure X Fund, participated in those Board of Supervisors meetings. So there's actually now a housing trust fund that has $12 million every single year dedicated to that, which goes to rental assistance, tenant legal services, and even filling in gap funding for affordable housing projects that haven't been available. And yeah, um, our surplus land also sending out requests for qualifications and requests for proposals for folks that are going to focus on deep, deep affordable housing components that are not just matching, you know, they use this, uh, area regional income base to base what affordable housing is, and we don't need to be compared to places like Danville, Oakland, and other cities that are more expensive to us. We need to focus our regional income measures based on Richmond's income.
I can see, uh, rent control, but you, you need to be careful. You don't want to destroy the real estate market. You destroy the real estate market, you put every person here in Richmond on rent control, you're destroying the real estate market, and the Richmond credit is going to go down. It's, Richmond is done. Remember TOPA? See, none of you people don't know about TOPA. It was a scam by the city council to evaluate people's property, so poor people could buy it. See, this is the scammers that they got on, on the city council. I live in public housing, because I'm retired, disability, social security. My rent's a little bit high, but, but still, I could afford it. But like I say, it all depends, because actually what you're doing, you're paying for the area. Because you got, really, Richmond is prime real estate. You could, uh, years ago, in the Iron Triangle, down on 4th McDonald's, you could buy a three-bedroom house for $100,000. And it was the most deadliest place in the state of California. Real estate, man, it was, it was great. But as soon as crime started dropping down, the real estate start going up. But it all goes back to square one. How you going to live your life? What plans you have on your life? You go to school, you get an education, you get a job skill. You won't have to buy, you won't have to go through this stuff. But, you know, it's, uh, you need to do your research on TOPA. And then the savings alone scam that the city tried to do, "Just sign your property over and ask. We'll take care of it." All it was a scam, because the city was going to sell the property to the real estate and give the people nothing. But like I say, you know, you have to have some type of rent control. There's people that really can't go out and get a good, steady job. They work at low-income jobs, and they need a place to live too. So that's why I favor some, some rent control. But like I say, for you young kids out there, you better get into college and start learning the trade, because those days are over when you get out of high school and start working at a factory or anywhere else. Those days are over. It's gone, because the job market is real hard nowadays, all right? Because everybody wants to blame everybody else for their screw-ups. Like, I remember, I met my, uh, two years after high school, I met my math teacher. She asked, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm working at factory. I was all dirty and stuff." She went, "I told you to do your homework, didn't I?" I said, "Yeah, you're right." And this is what I'm trying to tell these kids. But like I say, Richmond, you're paying for the weather. You have no hurricanes, you have tornadoes, you have no floods. We might have a rainstorm from here, from time to time. I lived in this area all my life. I know it by heart. When I was working, I had no problem paying rent, because I was making good money. I was, when I used to work as a auto mechanic, I was making $1,000 a day on the side. Thank you.
Can you repeat the question, please? Thank you. We, the question's about affordable housing.
Okay, I could just go from there. I don't want you to answer it.
You know, it, it's just basically, what would your solutions be?
Okay, great. Um, so even therapeutic-wise, I'm very solution-based. So we can hear about a lot of things, but it's like, well, what are we going to do about it? And so I feel like Richmond, especially with District One, uh, seem to be on a good track when it comes to building affordable housing. We just got the hacienda heights up with about 150 affordable housing units. Um, Metro Walk Phase Two is, um, in the works as well, with about, uh, an additional 150 units. We have the, uh, the Motel Six conversion, which will be about 48 units, um, supportive, um, supportive services, uh, living, so permanent housing, which will be great. Um, also, in District One, we have a very unique space that, that I feel has been solid. And I've been asking the question, like, "So what's going on? What's going on here? What's going on here?" 12th and McDonald's, if you were to just, like, we could literally take a field trip and walk there. There's these... There's these enormous vacant lots that have just been sitting there. I'm 37 and they've been sitting there for at least like two decades unused. That's the type of solutions that we need. We need builders. We need proactive leadership. People that are going to see these type of vacant properties, I mean, these type of vacant areas, just land just sitting there and ask the question. We have people that are literally, so these two lots that I'm referring to are gated. And we literally have the unhoused population sleeping on the ground outside of those gated lots. That is so unfair and it's unfair to other community members that have to go by and and watch this all take place. So again, to your question, we have a lot in the works, but can we do more? And the answer is yes, we can do more. We can build more housing. We have enough infrastructure currently present. All we need is the right people on council to get it done.
Thank you. So now it's time for the audience's questions. And the order, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, is will be Wasburg, Brown, and Willis. If the question is to everyone, but you could also ask individuals. If you have a question, just raise your hand and we'll run a mic over to you. If you if you wrote your question on a card and you would prefer that we read it, just hold your card up and someone will come and get it. We ask that you just keep your questions succinct and to the point and to please start by saying your name.
Great, thanks. My name is Diana Ware and I serve on the Economic Development Commission here in Richmond. And we're really excited that we're just about to launch the Taste of Richmond to lift up the restaurants here in our city. We got a wonderful grant from the city council to help support the restaurants because many have not recovered from the pandemic. So my question for each of you is how do you see work that you can do or a vision for uplifting the small businesses, particularly restaurants but others? And we're going to be highlighting Phila Burger right here in District One. But what what do you envision as a way to uplift small businesses in particular restaurants?
Well, my own personal opinion, the Richmond City Council has no business getting in other people's business if they want to start a business. If you want to start a business, you go down and get a loan. That's how you start a business. But I'm sure, you know, my own personal opinion, I wouldn't even have the city get involved with this stuff. Because what they're doing is they want to start all these small businesses. I like the question, what areas are you talking about in Richmond? Are you talking about here in downtown Richmond that you're going to open up a restaurant here? It ain't going to happen here. It wouldn't last five minutes because you got a high crime rate. Probably out out the outskirts, but but knowing what the city council is going to do, they want to start all these small businesses and they want to get rid of the big businesses. It don't make sense because they think all these small businesses are going to bring in more revenue and put people to work. It doesn't happen. I know how the RPA is going to operate on these small businesses. To my own personal opinion, ain't nothing but a scam. That's what they're doing. See, you people don't really know what the RPA is doing. They try to act like they're real nice people, but they got another trick up their sleeve. Believe me, I've been fighting these people for a long time. I know how they operate. But like I say, it's not for the city government to go down and give people loans to open up a business. If I want to open up a business, I'll have to get a loan, get my business license and everything and have something that people want. If I go out of business, okay, so be it. I shouldn't have to run to the city council and have to bail me out. Because we all know how the RPA works. Because actually you just get more government, more government, and more government. And it shouldn't be like that. Like I say, you go out of business, that's your problem.
Supporting local businesses in particular, I think, will be beneficial for the city to offer some tax incentives. But first and foremost, safety, especially when we're talking about downtown District One. Across all professions, safety is number one. I've never known a profession where safety isn't the chief, the the head of everything. So we have to get our safety and and things of that nature under control so people will want to come here and start their business. So people will want to expand their business and not rush and leave. Earlier, Mark spoke about taxing, you know. Whenever Richmond seems to need money, they seem to create a new tax, which is really weird, instead of creating new business revenue. That looks like supporting entrepreneurship, whether that's small business, medium sized businesses, or large businesses. Giving those, again, giving those tax incentives and business tax credits and and things of that nature. Making it more appealing. Of course, we have a lot of things to do before we start popping up more businesses around here. We have to clean up the streets. Like, there's times where family come in from out of town. Like, I don't want to take my family to Pinole to sit down outside and have ice cream because it looks nice and it's aesthetically pleasing. I don't want to have to go to El Cerrito. I want to stay right here in Richmond because I love Richmond. Richmond is a beautiful place and we have so much, so much untapped potential. And we just need to really start pushing the line. We really need the service providers to start providing the services. We can't expect so much from the community if we're not holding that same fire to our local representatives.
Last year, whenever the city was discussing what to do with the rest of our ARPA funding, and I'll just say shout outs to CoBiz and Richmond Main Street. I don't know if it's exactly what y'all wanted, but we did allocate 1.12 million dollars towards a small business relief and recovery from those who have been impacted by COVID-19. I think also what needs to be done in general is evaluating our planning process to make sure that it's not discouraging any new business owners from going through that process and seeing how we're streamlining it and making it more user friendly as much as possible. I was supportive and voted to put Measure U on a ballot, which passed with about 70% of the vote back in 2020. And that lowered the business license to $100 for anybody who made $250,000 in gross receipts or less. The business license would be $100. And one thing that I appreciated and honestly, thank you for the question. We need to operationalize this, and if I'm elected, I'll be committed to this. But we need to do more of a check in and annual needs assessment of a lot of our businesses just to see and understand like what some of those challenges are and actually hear from them what they're dealing with and figure out how we're using and leveraging our resources to support them as much as possible. And the, and also, you know, reaching out about this funds that are set along to the side to help out small businesses that still need to recover from COVID-19 and making sure we're putting very specific criteria on that as well so the money goes exactly where it needs to go to. The other thing that I was very, that I supported and co-sponsored with council member now Vice Mayor Jimenez and council member Sapeda is creating an arts corridor, which is actually going to be coming down this part of downtown Richmond and also along 23rd Street. And my hope and vision for that arts corridor is that it brings an identity to the corridor that makes it attractive so people want to come and see what's happening with our small businesses. And there's a new executive director of Richmond Main Street named Sarah that I just talked to. And she had a wonderful idea that I was just absolutely like, yeah, no, it sounds so simple, but we should do it. Actually start creating that vision for what is going to be coming to Richmond in some of these vacant lots. Like 12th and McDonald, there's still negotiations that are happening on a background that I wish I can get into, but I can't. But you know, even just putting up a sign saying, hey, this is going to be coming to Richmond or hey, at this vacant building, this is what you're going to see coming here now. So people aren't just seeing a vacant building, they're seeing what's to come in the future and can actually get excited about it.
Hi. Okay, my name is Skylam Mana and I am reporter for Richmond Council. So my question is specifically for Dr. Brown. Nice to meet you. So on your platform website, you talk. Okay, can you hear me? Oh, perfect. Sorry, y'all. So on your platform website, you talk about having a plan to engage the Richmond community through community action committees. And so what does the format of these committees look like? And what does the leadership role or what are the leadership roles that community members will be able to take?
Thank you so much. Great question. When we're talking about community engagement, we're talking about activating community members to engage in activities probably that they wouldn't ordinarily engage in. Also, more specific to your question is the half a billion dollar settlement that we just received from Chevron. So having an oversight committee as well as having an advisory board. This half a billion dollars, 50, 50 million a year would be coming into the general fund. The general fund has the, the city has the opportunity to spend that general fund however they see fit. So having oversight committee and an advisory board made up of community members and people that are, you know, directly impacted would give us that opportunity to engage the community. Like, hey, where do you want to see this money placed? You know, having a comprehensive assessment of our city, of our district, specifically identifying the immediate needs in the community and using some of those funds, if not all, to address the needs that are going on in our community and not, because, and I say that because we, I've heard so many different responses from various council members about what they're going to do with this funding. And I'm like, well, it's going in the general fund, so that's really not a guarantee. So we need something more concrete. And that's why having an oversight committee and an advisory board would give us something concrete and tangible that we can actually know where this money will be bundled to instead of just going into the general fund and paying bills. You know, so I hope that answered your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. We have a question, some questions on cards. And if you you have a question, just put your card in the air. You could even have it in Spanish. So this one is for council member Willis. About two years ago, the council majority chose to focus on education programs in lieu of enforcement to combat sideshows. The question is, what is the status of those programs?
The community education, the combat sides, uh, side, sideshows. I, the last report that I remember getting from it from two years ago came from Paul Graves, who was the Assistant District Attorney working out of the police department. And one thing that they do is they are, the DA's office has a diversion program. So if they happen to catch somebody who was a part of a sideshow, they'll do a diversion program as opposed to doing incarceration. And that, and that's where, and that's the part of the implementation on the communication that I'm very much aware of is that diversion program. But that's only if they're able to catch somebody on top of just letting community members know like, hey, don't participate in any sideshows that are happening in the community. Do not promote any sideshows that you know are happening in the community as well. And on top of that, since we've had that conversation two years ago, we actually implemented some of the recommendations that came out of that presentation. And that means we have CCTV cameras that are posted up in a lot of the hotspot areas, going back to the flock camera program that, and contracting with a license plate reader. But that data stays within the City of Richmond Police Department. It doesn't get shared out to any other agency unless they catch somebody who is involved in reckless driving. The City of Richmond has a policy to not do high speed pursuits within the city for safety issues. So having that data is able to be able to shared across other jurisdictions. So if they do catch somebody who leaves the city in a high speed chase and the, and that license plate gets flagged in like another jurisdiction like Oakland, Vallejo, or wherever we're sharing the services with, they're able to flag it and move forward if they filed something for reckless driving. And on top of that, for other hotspot areas, because some of the sideshows are very isolated and will happen like that, maybe one individual or two individuals, working with community members and walking them through our traffic safety process in order to figure out how we're deterring sideshows from happening in hotspot areas as well. And honestly, we could do more to do community education and just be more intentional about all these things that are happening. Because even for me, I had to look up the presentation we had two years ago because we're looking at a million agenda items per minute. So we're always having to shift our brain to the next issue. But the CCTV program and license plate readers are up and along with traffic safety guidelines and diversion programs for those that we catch involved in sideshows.
More questions?
I have a question for all three members, all three. I have a question for all three members. The Richmond City Council negotiated this $550 billion deal. Contrast that with the deal run by former mayor Butt, which provided $1 million a year in the last five years versus $60 million. That's a lot of money. What are your plans for more than a half a billion dollars over the next 10 years? Thank you.
I believe this would refer to the Chevron money. Okay, we'll be going Brown, Willis, Wasburg, and we're going to cut everybody to two minutes just so we could get more questions in.
Yes, great question. Again, emphasizing the need for an oversight committee and advisory board. So residents' voices will be amplified and heard. And we need a comprehensive assessment of the pressing needs that everyone is talking about in our community to create a data analysis, analysis. Again, to identify those pressing needs so those funds can be allocated appropriately. I also mentioned, just so it doesn't go into the general fund and pay bills. But you know, paying certain bills is not a negative thing. We have a lot of unfunded liability pension that needs to be addressed. That's been a hindrance to our budget for many, many years. So again, creating those conversations around what are the needs of the community and not allowing someone to tell us what they need. Being a social worker, the fastest way to upset a client is to tell them what they need instead of asking them what they need. And I feel like that's what many of our community members have been experiencing for some time with the, you know, the excess bike lanes when our seniors are are having extreme concerns about not being able to get on and off the curves what they feel safely. The millions that we're putting into the electric bikes that are in front of the Nevin Center, if you will, in District One. And now they're no longer there because they've been stolen and things like that. We don't really have a bike, you know, a huge bike culture. And when we have a mom that has four kids that has to get to work, school, pick up groceries, do laundry, I think she'll need something bigger than an electric bike. I think she'll need something bigger than an electric bike.
I'm gonna plus one Dr. Brown's community oversight body. That's something that actually came up when we had our special meeting at the Richmond City Council, August 14th. And I know that's something I've definitely been committed to. I heard three council members that during that meeting say that in their statements that they wanted to sponsor bringing a community oversight body forward. And I was like, great, cool. I can't wait to vote yes on it whenever we get all the details figured out. And on top of that, even right now during the campaign, like as I'm talking to people, I'm letting them know about that $550 million and letting them know how to sign up on during public comment and make sure that we're getting a good needs assessment in the community on what are those things that have been neglected for years? So we can make sure that we are prioritizing it. And you know, making sure that we're being responsible with this money and not getting so happy like we hit the lottery. So we just blow it all in one sitting. We've already had people tried reaching out to various council members saying, hey, we need you to put 30 million towards this issue or this million of that. Whoa, 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 whoa. Let's have our community budget sessions first. Let's get as much input as possible. And also blast that more, just letting people know that for the next 10 years, we're going to be getting 50 million a year for five years. And then the final year, 60 million a year. Here are the opportunities you can to participate. And if community members can't make it to our budget hearing sessions or city council meetings to do it, then we bring those issues to them. We work with the local community-based organizations, local community groups, and just find centralized areas where everybody feels safe enough to come out and give their input and vision on how they want this money to be spent.
This money with Chevron was all just to get by votes. It's election time. This is what they're gonna do. That half a billion dollars is gonna go straight to the general fund, straight up to Sacramento. Don't let the city council fool you and tell you that it's gonna go straight to Richmond. It doesn't happen like that. Every tax you pay goes up to the state and is going to go straight into the general fund. When I see a written contract between Chevron and the city about that money, then I'll believe it. Right now, for me, it's all just a bunch of hearsay. We're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. If Chevron, all I know is it was a verbal promise. It wasn't a contract signed by both parties, by both lawyers. As far as I'm concerned, they're just made, they're just blowing everything up to make everything look good. Because once I see Chevron gets on the airwaves and says, here's a check, and they show us the contract, because all it is is a verbal agreement. That even going, that's not even gonna hold up in court. Because Chevron has the best lawyers in the world and they'll find a way to get out of it. They had to sue over Measure U because the taxes were so high. So like I say, don't count, don't count your chickens before it's hatched. Because I, because the, something ain't right. It's like I said, when I see that contract signed by both parties, then I'll know it's a true deal. But for right now, they're making a big thing out of it. Oh, look, we're gonna do this. We're gonna do that. It's all about getting votes. It's what people do. So like I say, don't trust a word that the RPA is telling you. You need to sit and wait. And when you go to that city council meeting, you tell them, I want to see the written contract. Because like I say, a verbal contract won't hold no weight in court at all. Chevron's not stupid. Don't find a way to get out of it.
Okay, thank you all. We're gonna go to the cards now and the, this is for all three. The order will be Willis, Wasburg, Brown. Um, all, all three candidates touched on the city's crime rate. Recently, the Richmond Community Police Review Commission's top investigator resigned due to the board ignoring evidence of police misconduct. What do you plan to do to hold the accused officers and Richmond Community Police Review Commission accountable?
Evaluating the Richmond Community Police Commission and also assuring that it's actually keeping up with the best practices of other review commissions across the county. There's actually been a, the last time that commission was updated, unfortunately, was after Petty Perez was killed. And since then, states, the state has actually passed laws that allow community review commissions to have more authority. And that also means even having subpoena power as well. And up until recently, I thought that if anybody got, had bodily harm, that would automatically trigger a review in the Community Police Commission. And I found out that there are more specific circumstances that need to happen before that, before an automatic review should happen. So yeah, on top of that, it's just gonna be making sure that the guidelines of the Community Police Review Commission triggers whenever, uh, triggers whenever there's bodily harm that's happening in the community. And actually just publicizing more that the Community Review Commission is a place you can go if you have any issues with officers dealing with misconduct issues. I mean, I already had to work with a community member in District One who had a negative experience with the police officers. And he didn't even know about the CPRC. He just reached out to me, his district council member, and invited me to be a part of a meeting he was having at the police department in order to address some of these issues. And that's some of the things that I've been having to do is if folks have issues with the cops, I've been to one fielding the complaints, trying to schedule meetings with the police chief and assistant police chief and see if community members are willing to speak up. But we just need to automate that commission a bit more when it comes to misconduct issues and make it more simplified for folks who want to file a grievance.
Well, I went to the police commission meeting. They don't have no power. All they do is get, fill out a report, have their meetings, and they hand it over to the chief. I was attacked at the city council meeting. The cop came up and told me, that's enough. You said enough. He put his hands on me and says, you don't have the right to speak. That was right on video. I said, right now, we have three corrupt cops. The chief has a restraining order on her. She was out there threatening people's lives just because her daughter was out there being a prostitute. She went after, uh, the prostitute's family, threatened them. That's why they have restraining on her. Captain Simmons, he attacked me. And that one cop, I think his name's Sergeant Kane, he attacked Cowboy Gus. The Richmond Police Department is notorious about corrupt cops. Back in the day, you had the Cowboys. None of you people remember that because he was just too young then. And, uh, yeah, believe me. See, we have to get the corrupt cops out. This is not bashing the police. This is not defunding the police. It's all about getting the corrupt cop. You cannot be a police officer and going out there being the thug. Because I jumped all over the peace, the police chief last meeting. I had no problems with the Richmond PD until I got in a conflict with Tim Simmons. This guy was just acting like a thug. And I lost all respect for it. But like I say, you can't, you can't, just because you got three bad cops, you can't say all cops are bad. But like I say, Mark Gagel, I went to court, Mark Gagel lied. It cost me $400. We need cops, but don't trust them. Believe me, it's true. I had my dealings with cops. I don't trust them at all. And yeah, you guys know what I mean. But like I say, it's, it's, uh, they should have, okay, thank you.
Yes. So the community review commissions, I feel that they should hold transparency with the public, ensuring that all policies and procedures are followed accordingly. Also, um, putting it back into the hands of our local department for them ensuring the transparency with the public. We shouldn't have to keep fishing for answers or trying to demand this or demand that. The quickest way to isolate the community is to keep telling them, well, it's still under the, it's still under investigation. It's still pending. That's the fastest way to isolate the community as well as to lose trust. And so reinstilling that trust into our law enforcement agency, I think, would be paramount to this process. And also engaging our community members. Again, we have a police department that is, you know, checks and balances. Everything doesn't always add up. However, I just noticed especially in District One, the disrespect for our law enforcement, uh, department and law enforcement overall, even across the nation, how the profession itself has been so degraded. And rightfully so, as mentioned, we may have a, a officer who's tainted and that could potentially taint the whole law enforcement, um, department. However, we have to publicly ridicule bad cops in the face of community members so we can know that, okay, our police department does not tolerate bad cops. And so with that, we're rebuilding trust and regaining the confidence of the community back into our law enforcement department. But also, we have to train, retrain this culture to start respecting law enforcement officers as well.
Can we ask one more question, Becky, from, um, some residents? Here's one question here.
Uh, just questions for, uh, Dr. Brown and, uh, council, council member Willis. So, uh, everyone talks about the economics of downtown Richmond as, uh, in terms of, but this area is not having much to offer. But I know for facts that many people travel from this area to El Cerrito, to Pino, to do their grocery shopping. They travel to Oakland and Berkeley to go to restaurants. They are looking for services that they can, like you said earlier, um, allow their families to enjoy. So I'm wondering, since there is a demand for those particular services and experiences, what is your economic development plan for this area? Because there are great institutions and resources right here in this district. And we can't have the other council members ignoring the value that's here. And so just want to get your thoughts in that regard. And lastly, we also want to know, how would you support this community to have the water turned on so the trees can grow? To have the streets power washed so that the, as thanks to the space can look beautiful? To have the areas, um, to have them, the grass cut? So when people park their cars, they can feel that they're in a place that's actually well-cut? How can you support the institutions and the businesses and the schools and the people here operating to have those quality services as well?
Thank you. So the question was to council member Willis and then Dr. Brown.
A lot of it is gonna just have to come down to marketing and also challenging the narrative that is out there in the community or in the greater region that Richmond is a prime written community and don't go there. Like the more that that narrative has been plaguing this city since before I've been on the council and we've actually come a very long way. Also, just what is the community's vision for downtown Richmond? Like I can point out a vacant building and point out a business, but it's also gonna be like, what kind of business do we actually want to go there? And how are we identifying and marketing out to the business community saying like, hey, this is what our community wants to see. Let's work with you. Once again, the, for a small business, especially opening up, it's only a hundred dollars to have a business license, which to me is an incentive to actually open up a business. When before, I've talked to community members who wanted to do business where they lived and worked and had their experiences in here in Richmond, but they were discouraged by going through the process. And in terms of all those other needs that were mentioned, power washing, trimming the grass, a lot of that will also be coming down to what type of staff and services that we are gonna be hiring. Making sure that if I'm elected as a council member, that I'm regularly available to meet with community members and identify those specific needs so they can be presented at council, ensuring that those needs are part of our annual budget discussions until they're actually met in terms of like our, uh, street sweepers and those, if the thing was power washing, we just had to replace a couple of street sweepers so we could start doing that again. And you know, our medians need to be clean on Pennsylvania Avenue. Apparently, they weren't taken care of for three years. I went down there my damn self and started mowing down some medians. So even just doing things like that, bringing attention to the issue.
So when we're, when we're talking about District One and we're talking about it being safe, and I back the question, who is it safe for? There are still born and raised in this area, fourth generation. There are still stop signs and stoplights that I don't sit at for too long. I'm just gonna, I'll rather get the ticket. Um, and that should speak to the safety here in this district. Also, um, our city council creates this safety or, or says that our city is more safe because the reduced number of homicides in this area. Although the homicide rates have decreased, other crimes have increased as well as Richmond residents. If you know people from Richmond, although they didn't get killed or die in Richmond, they may have died in Vallejo. They may have died in Antioch. They may have died in Oakland, so forth and so on. But, um, when we're talking about how do we help support these places coming in? Um, I'll speak back to that Chevron settlement that we just received. And it shouldn't be the city's payday. It should be the resident's payday because we are the ones that are directly impacted. Also, when we're talking about what are the needs in the community and what do we want to see? Those are the things that, those are the things, um, that we need to discuss and why it's so important that we do get that oversight committee and that advisory board. So community members can come out and say, hey, I live in District One or I live in District, um, Two, Three, whatever, and say, this is what I want to see in my community. And, and have that honored, have their voices actually heard. And also, when it comes to cleaning up our city and things like that, again, this money is not the city's payday. It's the community's payday. And we want to see cleaner streets. So we have to beef up our public services. I've spoken to Public Works, uh, Public Works, and they are overworked and understaffed. That's why the lawns are overgrown. That's why the weeds are so high up to your waist. That's why you can't see, um, you know, okay. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, we're at the part of the forum where each of the candidates is gonna get one minute to make a closing statement. We're gonna start with Mr. Wasburg, then go to Dr. Brown, and we'll end with our incumbent council member Willis.
One minute, huh? Okay. I'll try to put everything in one minute. The bottom line of government is to serve the people under the Constitution. I don't care if the city council paints the streets gold. When you take a note to the Constitution, you respect it. You don't go around being stupid like this, supporting criminals. That was in terrorist, killing, burning babies. You don't be on the city council stopping police checkpoints and think you got some rule that you're gonna stop the federal government coming in and arresting criminals. That ain't gonna happen. See, this is the stupidity that people, these people have on the city council. They think they have more power than the federal government. It doesn't work like that. The bottom line is we need to get the people off this city council. There's three people running on the same ticket because they want to ensure that their so-called communist regime stays on this city council. They've been doing this for almost 15 years. You laugh. You think it's funny. You talk to the people around here. They know what's happening. You try to go in front of the city council, speak your piece, that will cut you down violating the Brown Act and the Constitution. So you can't have people like Willis and the RPA out there supporting criminals, supporting hate. I, like I said, I don't care if these.
Mr. Wasburg?
Oh, get them out.
Thank you.
Thank you. District One, I am the woman for the job. It's time to dispel the notion that our district is just the ghetto where anything goes. We are so much more than that and we deserve better. Let's take back our streets and restore the pride and potential that has been overlooked for far too long. From day one, I will be ready to work. Equipped with the skills and expertise and heart that this district has been missing for far too long. I am not just talking about change. I'm here to make it happen. And on November 5th, Jamila Brown will appear on your ballot in District One. And I ask for your support because District One deserves better. Thank you.
All right. Thank you again for hosting at this eve- this event this evening. I've been on the council for two terms. And at the end of the day, there's already a lot that I can be proud of that I thought wasn't gonna happen. I mean, the hacienda- I mean, the hacienda got rebuilt finally while I was on the council, when that got closed down in 2013 and became a place where folks broke into and even a bunch of fire hazards happened. When I first got elected, the city manager at the time was not that enthusiastic or hopeful about the library being renovated, and we had some dedicated staff and good decisions happen to where the library renovation project will break ground next year, and part of the Chevron money can help fill in any gap funding or even expand on a vision of what that library could be. We have community crisis response that wasn't out here in Richmond until I was happy enough to vote for it when we had the opportunity and so many other issues. I'm proud of the work that I've done in Richmond, but at the end of the day, your vote is your own. Vote your conscience.
Thank you very much, candidates. Thanks to all of you as well. I really apologize we didn't get to seven of your questions, but thank you for being so engaged. Yeah, like a council meeting.
Got flowers, got flowers on the table up there.
If we have, we have information back there, and if, if you enjoyed yourself tonight, you may want to check out our other two candidate forums, uh, for District Six on Monday, September 30th, at the Bermuda Room in Memorial Auditorium, and for District Five on Tuesday, October 8th, at Easter Hill United Methodist Church on Cutting Boulevard. You'll find more information in Richmond Side and in Richmond Confidential and CC Pulse and in Il Tinto. Thank you all.